Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council Meeting. It is January 11th, 6 o'clock. Austin Maxwell, council member, has our prayer and our pledge.
If you would, please bow with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time together tonight. We ask that you watch over us, that you guide us, that you be with us as we make the decisions for the members of every person in the city of Murfreesboro and our community, the best interest of everybody. Please be with us, keep us safe. Thank you for so many that serve our city, whether they are regular city employees, police, fire, and thank you for the citizens that are here tonight for their input and participation. For in your name that we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here tonight to recognize the recipient of the December Stars Award, and this is going to be a good one. The purpose of the Stars Award is to recognize and reward our employees that go above and beyond their normal job duties in providing outstanding customer service to both our internal and our external customers. Tonight's recipient is a lady who is probably a bedrock of the Segal community. If you're a parent who has or maybe has had a child at Irma Segal Elementary School, then her face will look familiar. This award is being presented because of this person's consistent, warm, and gracious personality. Tonight's recipient is Ms. Mary Smith. Ms. Smith works in our police department as a school traffic enforcement patrol person, better known as a crossing guard. Ms. Smith has been employed with the city of Murfreesboro since December of 1999, almost 25 years. Matthew Blumley, our Assistant Director of Planning, recommended Ms. Mary for the Stars Award. Matthew told us that Ms. Mary has been employed by the city as a crossing guard since 1999. She's been keeping our kids safe for nearly 25 years after having retired from her first career. I have two children who attend Irma Segal Elementary School, and this is our fifth year as Irma Segal parents. We live nearby and walk to and from school every day. Ms. Mary directs traffic at the kindergarten entrance into the school along Regency Park Drive. She takes great pride in keeping both the children and the parents safe. In my hundreds of walks to and from school, I have never once witnessed an incident or accident at this entrance to the school. While maintaining safety is of paramount importance, that's not the only thing that Ms. Mary takes pride in. Every day when we walk to school, she is quick with a smile and a friendly word. I have been on the receiving end of hundreds of "how are you?", "have a good day?" from Ms. Mary. A smile, a wave, or a kind word from Ms. Mary gets our day started on the right foot. It is evident from all the honks and waves from parents driving by that she is universally appreciated and valued by all the Irma Segal Elementary parents. Ms. Mary is an exemplary representative of the city. I am thankful for her presence at Irma Segal and for the care that she takes in keeping our kids safe each and every day. Ms. Mary is here tonight with her family and friends, and Ms. Mary, we'd like for you to stand. And on behalf of the mayor and the city council and the very appreciative community of Irma Segal Elementary School, it's my pleasure and honor to recognize you as the city Star Award winner for December.
Woo! I punched you. Damn, my mic is off.
Her face looks pretty busy.
She's got pretty busy, her face.
Yeah.
I feel like we probably just need to go ahead and adjourn the meeting now.
Yes.
That was a highlight.
That sure was.
You know, and folks, those crossing guards are almost, well, they are, they're the front door to our schools. I feel like I drive, all the school zones that you drive through, you see and know all the crossing guards. Ms. Debbie, on Dejarnet, you have, I don't even know her name, but I just know her from the way that she waves at everybody on Memorial. She was actually on the Kelly Pickler talk show a couple of years ago, so they do a great job, and much like our mail delivery, it's rain, snow, sleet, they're out there. So, we're thankful for Ms. Mary, she's a blessing. And I don't, we didn't have anyone, Mr. Edgar, we didn't have anyone sign up for public comment on actionable items, okay? All right, let's move to your consent agenda. You have 11 items on your consent agenda. Anything that needs to be moved off?
If there are none, I'll move for approval.
Second. Motion in a double second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye, you have two items under Old Business Ordinance 23047, modify city code 33211. This is, excuse me, 211. This is second and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye, item 13, ordinance 23048, repeal of code section 2122, and this is second and final reading.
So moved.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion in a second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye, we'll move to new business. You have ordinance, ordinance sport, excuse me, under ordinance, you have fiscal year 24, a budget amendment. This is administration.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye, all right, this is a first time, there's a first time for everything, and so we've got a few procedural things that we're going to have to do a little different just because public hearings and holidays. So, we're going to move item 22 up to above item 15.
Yes, sir.
In true Auburn fashion, we're out of order.
(laughter)
So, Matthew.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. We did have a little bit of an issue with the public hearing notice in the newspaper, so we are requesting that you reschedule the five public hearings that were scheduled for tonight for January the 25th. And in anticipation of your favorable vote on rescheduling the public hearings, we have already gone ahead and published those legal notices in the newspaper so that we can keep things moving for our applicants as smoothly as possible. So, we would recommend that you reschedule the five public hearings on the council communication for January the 25th, which is two weeks from tonight. And I should mention that all of those items, so that we can still keep them on track, we are going to be considering first reading tonight, and then the public hearings will be prior to second and final reading on the 25th.
And folks, and what we are going to do on top of that, once we pass this, we're going to ask for a motion to suspend the rules, and if it's okay, after each item, I'm going to ask if someone's here wishing to speak. We don't, we don't have a public hearing, but that way, if someone is here and wants to speak on those items, they don't have to come back next week, then we will suspend the rules again next week to add those items to the record under the public, the public hearings. First time for everything. So, let's consider for passage, rescheduling the public hearings that Mr. Blumley has recommended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye, all right, we're going to consider items 15, 16, 17 has been removed, and 18, all of those have public hearings, but I'd like to have a motion to suspend the rules to be able to have comment at, on each of those items.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion in a second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye, all right, we now have ordinance 23OZ39 zoning for property west of Sanctuary Place. Mr. Blumley?
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. There is a companion annexation request that goes with this property, but since annexation doesn't have two readings like zoning does, we'll wait to consider the annexation on January the 25th. This is for about 5.24 acres located to the west of Sanctuary Place, which is a private street within the Merrymont Springs subdivision. It's in the area in the green on the map before you. It is a part of a larger parcel that is located fronting on Veterans Parkway. The owners of the three lots that are directly adjacent to this study area are seeking to expand the size of their lots, expand the backyards. There are already houses on each of those three lots, and so they just wish to have larger lots, and so they have, under contract, to purchase this property from Mr. Adams, who owns the property, the larger tract fronting on Veterans Parkway. They anticipate closing on that property within the next several days, and so by the time this gets to second reading, they will actually be part of the lots that front on Sanctuary Place that is already in the city limits receiving city services. So, there's a companion annexation request for this that we will consider on January the 25th, but this request, the zoning request, is purely to zone it as part of the Merrymont Springs PUD, and this would simply enable it to be zoned consistent with the balance of those three lots, which is for single-family residential uses. Mr. Brick Murphy is here representing the three property owners who are purchasing the property from Mr. Adams. He's here if you have any questions for him. There's no formal presentation because it's basically just adding the existing Merrymont Springs PUD zoning onto this property, not changing the PUD zoning. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions as you consider first reading on this item.
Any questions on the application?
So moved.
Second.
Wait a second, before we take the motion on that, I want to ask, is there anyone who has any comments on this rezoning request? Okay, there are none, so we have a motion in a second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, Mr. Blumley, we'll move to item 16. This is ordinance 23OZ40, rezoning property along Old Fort Parkway.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for the Stones River Mall property, or as it's called now, the Stones River Town Center. So, Sterling Organization owns the majority of the mall property. They own the area in the turquoise color on the map before you. The three lots that are red were identified as additional study area for this zoning request. They are a part of the mall development but are owned separately. Of course, a corporation owns the J.C. Penney's, and Olive Garden and Miller's are separately owned as well. So, we are, we received a request to rezone the mall development to, from Commercial Highway to PCD, Planned Commercial District, and the reason for that is that Sterling Organization wishes to subdivide off certain parts of their parent parcel. Specifically, the most immediate need is to subdivide off the movie theater, and so we're looking for ways to be creative and help see the Stones River Mall development succeed and look for creative ways to help it continue to stay in our community for years and years to come. And so, as we looked at ways that they could subdivide off the movie theater, they were rubbing up against our regulations in the Commercial Highway zoning district, specifically the zoning or the landscaping requirements along the perimeter and the rear setback requirement. So, we talked to them about a planned development approach. That planned development approach, they could build in the exceptions that they needed to subdivide off pieces of their property. And so, they are making requests to, for interior property lines to not have any required landscape yards, which essentially makes it no different than it is today, and also to remove the rear setback requirement, which makes it basically no different than it is today. The physical form of the development will not change, but as we say in the planning department, property lines create expectations, expectations for building setbacks, landscaping, among other things. So, the planning commission considered this item and voted to recommend its approval, and we'll need to conduct a, or excuse me, we'll need to consider this on first reading tonight. Before you do, Sean Shaw with Kim Lee Horn and Associates has a brief presentation regarding this request.
Hi, good evening. Sean Shaw with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. As Matthew Blumley has already stated, the intent is to subdivide the main mall parcel into three separate lots, one for the AMC Theater to be sold off, and a second one for a future developable lot adjacent to Miller's Ale House along Old Fort Parkway. A brief overview for the site map, the site's located right along Old Fort Parkway and surrounded by Mall Circle Drive, existing zoning, Commercial Highway. Also, it's adjacent, the zoned park for the golf course. It coincides with the future land use map and maintains the general commercial requirements. Our proposed land Commercial District outlined here, you can see Lot 4 proposed as the AMC Theater Lot, subdivided off from 1A, which is the main mall lot, and the addition of Lot 5 along Old Fort Parkway for the future developable lot. Couple examples of existing building elevations for the architecture that's out there today. This kind of would set the standard to maintain that architecture standard throughout the future developing. Our design exceptions would be the landscape interior perimeter plantings based on the new lots provided, and to be able to get AMC out, along with Lot 1C for the J.C. Penney doesn't also coincide with that. The maximum spaces without landscape islands were required to coincide with that 12 limit, and we have existing condition that has 37 spaces. Additionally, the maximum rear setback Commercial Highways for 20, and we're requesting zero based on the AMC division space between the main lot mall and the AMC Theater. That was all I had, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone wanting to speak on this rezoning request? For or against? All right, we'll note that, and we'll now consider on first reading, ordinance 23OZ40.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion in a second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye, item 17 has been removed, we'll move to item 18. This is 23O45, amending the zoning ordinance, miscellaneous revisions.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Staff, specifically Ms. Holly Smith, who is right there, worked very hard on this zoning ordinance amendment. It was a collaborative effort with our staff and the planning commission, but Ms. Smith undertook this, and we appreciate her work on it. We're always looking to fine tune our ordinances, make improvements so that they are more customer-friendly, more clear, always looking to make improvements, and I think our staff are on the front lines, and they see things that need to be improved every day, and so we try to make note of those and bring those to the planning commission and the city council, and those improvements, and we think benefit all of our stakeholders. So, this was, this is a zoning ordinance amendment with a number of miscellaneous revisions. I'll briefly touch on a couple of them. Many of the revisions deal with improvements to our definitions section. We had definitions that were unclear, that were inconsistent with terms used elsewhere in the zoning ordinance, or where we had terms that were undefined that needed to be defined. So, I think we included some very needed definitions in section two. We also updated Chart 1, uses permitted, to be consistent with our definitions section, and one of the other improvements that we made with Chart 1 is we included a CCO column for easy reference for what uses are prohibited in the city core overlay district. But there are, you know, as the business world evolves, there are uses that come up that we see come before us more and more often, and when they're not in Chart 1, then we have to make interpretations on how to classify them. The more uses we can put in Chart 1, the easier it is to classify them, and the more consistent we are across the board so that, you know, no matter who someone goes to in our department, they're getting a consistent answer. One thing that I did want to mention about Chart 1 is that there's a printing error, or not a printing error, but just a, an error assembling that ordinance, and you'll notice in the ordinance that's at the end of your, this item in the agenda, the final column, which is the city core overlay district column, was cut off inadvertently, and, but if you have any questions about what is and is not permitted in the city core overlay district, the working copy of the document is located also inside of the agenda packet for your reference. So, spoke with Mr. Tucker before the meeting, and he mentioned that you could vote on it tonight on first reading, and that we will have the, we will have the corrected version of the ordinance for you on second and final reading. Speaking of the city core overlay district, we also made improvements to our city core overlay district, and we also made some improvements to our non-conformity section, our site plan review section, and one of the other improvements that we made, that Mr. Matt Taylor, in particular, is, actually spoke at our planning commission public hearing in favor of. We're trying to streamline the process for zoning applications as they move from the planning commission to the city council. So, one of the improvements that we're making is that there's nothing that requires a zoning request or an annexation request to come before you for scheduling the public hearing, and so we're amending the zoning ordinance to take out that step, cut off about two weeks off the process, and allow the city manager to, on designated public hearing days, to schedule those, which will, which will enable the applicants to have greater predictability and more efficiency as they, as their applications go through the process. Planning Commission conducted not only a public hearing on this matter, but also had a two, two and a half hour workshop on the matter in November, in which we got great feedback from our planning commission, and we were able to take that feedback, fine tune it even more before it went to the planning commission for a public hearing. And then in December, the planning commission recommended approval of the zoning ordinance amendment. So, I'm happy to answer any questions about the amendment, and we have this for first reading on tonight's agenda.
This has already gone through planning commission, correct?
Yes, sir. Planning Commission held a public hearing and voted to recommend approval on December the 6th.
That's right, this is item 18, so we do need to, if anyone has any comments on the change of these definitions. All right, no seenes, so we're ready for a motion, thanks for the note.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye, thank you, Mr. Blumley.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to sewer allocation variance on South Church Street for a retail building. Mr. Barbie?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Murfreesboro City Council. The next item before you is a sewer allocation variance request for a property located at 3416 South Church Street. The applicant's requesting a 1.1 single-family unit variance from our ordinance for the creation of a two-tenant commercial building. Our Water Resources Department has reviewed this request and confirmed that additional capacity for this request is available, and the planning department is also in favor of the request as well. Available if you have any questions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye, all right, we'll move to item night, or, excuse me, item 20. This is sewer allocation variance for New Salem Highway, Jolicious Donuts.
Yes, not related to our other planner, Mr. Joel Aquilera. He will visit like the rest of us. This request is for an additional seven single-family units of sewer capacity in order to create a multi-tenant commercial building located along the south side of New Salem Highway and east Caeson Lane, and east of Caeson Lane. Our Water Resources Department has reviewed the application, and they do have adequate capacity to serve this request. The planning department has also reviewed the request as well, and it's also in favor of it. Available if you have any questions.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion in a second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye, all right, we'll move to the same sewer, excuse me, sewer allocation variance for North Rutherford Boulevard, East Side Village.
Yes, sir. The next sewer allocation variance request is for a 10.5 single-family unit variance for three proposed food service uses on the three lots that you can see on your screen now. This is on the east side of North Rutherford Boulevard and north of Louise Street for the development of three commercial lots. Our Water Resources Department has reviewed the application, and capacity is available to serve this location, and planning has also reviewed the application and supports the request as well. Available if you have any questions.
If there are none, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion in a second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye, thank you, Mr. Barbie. All right, we're going to move to item 23. All right, we're going to move to item 23, the acquisition of 223 Northwest Broad Street.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item is regarding the acquisition of 223 Northwest Broad as part of the Town Creek project. The acquisition of the property will allow for the daylighting of Town Creek near the front street end of that project. The city has received an appraised value of 2.81 million or $2,810,000 for the entire property and would ask that you approve the initiation of condemnation proceedings. There was negotiating and that has, that negotiation process was unsuccessful. So we ask that you initiate or approve the initiation of condemnation proceedings for the appraised value. We'll also state that there is a minus of value that has already been tendered for a small piece in the back of that property. But we'd ask that you approve that initiation and also approve the authorization to negotiate a settlement to the limits allowed under the federal property acquisition requirements. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Which building is 223?
That's the building on the corner of Front Street and Northwest Broad. It's the long, the liquor store, Longhorn Liquor, I believe is the name of it. Any questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move to demolition of 219 Northwest Broad Street structures.
This is item is also related to Town Creek, daylighting as well. It is the demolition of 219 Northwest Broad Street, which is the old 219 North Broad Street Cuisine, I believe is what it was called, the old Choney's Building. The city's issued an invite, had issued, has issued an invitation to bid in this past December. And the task, for this task, lowest respondent bidder was Timber Ridge Build- Builders, excuse me, in the amount of $81,000. This will be to remove the building, all structures, rubble as well, asphalt, anything on, pretty much everything on the site. And we would ask that the contract with Timber Ridge Builders be approved in the amount of $81,000. It's funded, to be funded by the general fund. I'm available for questions.
If there are none, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to purchase of a service service truck.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Kyle Lingo, Assistant Director for Fleet Services Department. We are putting forward a, an amendment to our contract to purchase a service truck from Wilson County Motors. Our vendor was unable to supply a four-wheel drive chassis for our service truck, but we worked with them to secure a similar two-wheel drive chassis for the truck. It has changed the purchase price that was originally approved back in October from 125, 104 dollars to 120,273 dollars, a decrease of 4,831 dollars. We put this forward to you for approval. Any questions?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move to item 26, amendment one to the contract with M3 Technology.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Steve Gerald, the deputy chief. Unfortunately, Chief Bowen's a little under the weather, so he couldn't make it tonight. So it's an honor for me to stand here tonight for the first time before you. First, we have for your consideration is amendment one to the contract with M3 Technology. As you are all aware, we've been working towards the implementation of our real-time crime center. And this purchase is necessary for the integration, for the needed audio and visual equipment, necessary for analysis of information and investigative efforts. The cost of this purchase is 60,749 dollars and is funded by the department's FY24 operating budget. And I'll be happy to attempt to answer any questions that you might have.
If no questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move to the purchase of the Raven gunshot detection.
Next we have for consideration is the approval and purchase of the Raven gunshot detection from Insight Public Sector. This system will provide real-time alerts to law enforcement, enabling a faster response to situations with a more precise location with incidents involving gunfire. It will also assist our department with statistical information, investigations, and crime solvability. This proposed expense is $250,000 for a two-year contract and will be funded by the Violent Crime Intervention Fund. And I will be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 28, Central Square Solutions in Support Agreement for CAD Software.
Lastly, we have for your consideration is an agreement with Central Square for support and maintenance of the computer aided dispatch system, which is also known as our CAD system. The department's been utilizing CAD software from Central Square, which was formerly known as Tritech since 2015. This system operates the emergency communication, the 911 center for police and fire mobile units. This is a five-year contract with a total cost of 1,977,487 dollars, which is billed in annual installments, which is provided from the department, I'm sorry, the first annual payment of 357,875 dollars will be from the department's FY24 operating budget and future payments as outlined in the contract will be booked for accordingly. And I will attempt to answer any questions that you might have.
Move.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Deputy Chief Gerald, thank you. All right, we'll move to item 29, Agreement for Decking and Materials for Discovery Center Walkway. Mr. Corr.
Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to come for you tonight. Mr. Elliott is under the weather and I'll be presenting this in lieu of him being here. Wanted to give you a little picture. This is actually for purchase of decking material for the Discovery Center walkway. The exhibit you have in front of you, the green area shows the area of the of the trail and the boardwalk or the walkway that is open. The red is the area that will be closed for this new decking material. So the purchase is from New Creations Construction. I think there were two bids. $82,000 is from the FY21 bond proceeds. It's about 525 feet of walkway and Rollins will be installing that under their maintenance services agreement in the future. So I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Mr. Corr? We're excited to get this project completed.
I move for approval. Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corr. All right, we'll move to item 30, the purchase of automated garbage trucks. Mr. Gossett?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. Good evening. Before you is a request to approve the purchase of six automated Labri garbage trucks from Environment Products Group, EPG. The solid waste department is requesting the approval of this purchase of six automated siloed garbage trucks. These trucks will help reduce nine route trucks, I'm sorry, replace nine route trucks that have aged and become operationally inefficient. EPG will deliver the trucks by fall of 2024. And the quick delivery will enable the solid waste department to make the needed route changes to be safer and more efficient. This expense will be 2,435,273 dollars and is budgeted in the FY24 CIP. I'm available for any questions on that.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we have the purchase of replacement arms for our automated garbage trucks.
Yes, thank you again. Up next is the purchase of, the request to approve the purchase of two replacement arm assemblies for New Way Rotopack garbage trucks. The solid waste department is requesting the approval of the purchase of two new Rotopack arm assemblies. These assemblies will replace the automated arm for trucks 230 and 231. Each truck is seven years old with over 11,000 operating hours. Each arm has operated over 2 million dump actions with a life expectancy of only 1 million. In their current condition, these trucks are unable to keep up with the route standards, pace to the inefficient arm, and additionally, they create spilled garbage and hydraulic leaks. Fleet department has deemed this replacement necessary to keep these trucks on route. The expense will be 100,700 dollars and is budgeted in the solid waste department's FY24 operational budget. I'm available for any questions on those.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move into the contract renewal for Rollins Brush and Limb Collection.
Yes, thank you again. Last for me is the request to approve the contract renewal for Rollins doing business as Rec Pro for Brush and Limb Collection. Renewal is required for the current Rec Pro contract to keep their services for Brush and Limb Collection. This renewal will serve the city until January 8th, 2025. Rec Pro won the bid for services awarded in January of 2023 with an annual contract total of 1,456,800 dollars. This contract allows Rec Pro to be renewed each year, not to exceed three years total. In 2023, Rec Pro served 35,46 homes with 3,500 tons of yard waste collected monthly. This expense, 707,350 dollars, is budgeted in the FY24 operational budget with the remaining 729,450 to be approved in 2025 operational budget. I'm available for any questions.
The letter of renewal, I didn't see it in the packet. Goes to Mid Cumberland.
Yes, so the only thing we have is the cover.
Cover letter.
The cover letter. And then it goes straight to Mid Cumberland. Do we have that letter of renewal, Mr.?
I have a copy with me, but I only have one.
Okay.
I think I think it's a, it's a one, it's a one page. Yeah, it's a one page. It continues the contractual terms with the exception, I think there's a small small increase for next year. Otherwise, it continues the contractual terms that were agreed to last year.
So council members, we, I think this is our fifth year.
Yes.
Fifth year where we were having, five years ago, significant
Delay.
Spots and delays on picking up yard and brush services. So we had the idea of putting the city into the quadrants. City picks up two of those.
That's right.
We subcontract the other two. And our complaints have been drastically reduced. And that even goes back to where we actually used to do yard and brush pickup once every two weeks. And we couldn't, we couldn't keep up with that. So this has helped tremendously.
And there was a price increase though, or no?
Maybe wrong. Was it same price?
It's same price.
Okay, there was no price increase.
No price increase. It says 727,350 for fiscal year 24, 729,450 in fiscal year 25. So as long as there's no price increase.
Yeah, the contract, it probably had an annual increase in there.
But the annual contract is 1.4?
That's correct. Annual contract is 1.4. I think it splits fiscal years and that's why one year is 727 and the next is 729. So it must be an annual increase in the contract.
Thank you, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, now that makes sense.
I do think when we went through and had this discussion, we really went through and figured that by the time that we bought the knuckle boom trucks, maintained those knuckle boom trucks, and had to try to find people to hire to do those, we still were better off subcontracting it out.
That's right.
So it is for the taxpayer a much, much cheaper and more efficient alternative.
And I appreciate the efficient service.
They did a good job.
Heck of a lot better. Anything else? If not, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Amendment to, I, thank you, Mr. Gossett. We have item 33, amendment two to contract with Mid Cumberland Human Resource Agency.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Transportation Department is recommending your approval of a contract amendment with Mid Cumberland Human Resource Agency to secure the cost of paratransit services for fiscal years 25 and 26. The current contract expires June 30th, '24 and contains a provision allowing for two two-year extensions. Both Mid Cumberland and the city wish to exercise the first two-year extension, keeping the cost of services per trip as they currently are. The total annual cost is expected to remain between 475 and 510,000. Federal and state funds cover 75%, making the city cost 120 to 128,000, which is accounted for in the department budget. So again, we recommend approval of this contract and I'll be happy to address any questions.
I'm sorry, I'm new here. Can you explain what exactly?
Paratransit is?
Yes.
Yeah, so if you operate a fixed route service and take federal funds, you're required to have a paratransit service specifically for people who have disabilities. Whatever that disability is, it qualifies them for. We we maintain the eligibility list for that. We provide that list to Mid Cumberland Human Resource Agency. Those are the only people that they can transport under our contract. And it's a door-to-door service, so it's not, not like your typical fixed route where you're just on a main route. We go to their home, take them to where they're going to go.
So when they're a paralyzed veteran in a wheelchair.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
A paralyzed veteran in a wheelchair.
Yeah, that would be one instance, yes.
Wow. Okay, great. Thank you for the clarification.
I have no questions. So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Well, now move to 34, Contract with Trip Spark.
All right, Transportation Department is recommending your approval of a three-year contract with Trapeze Software Group. Trapeze does business as Trip Spark and has provided our software and tracking equipment for the transit system since 2014. After several amendments to the contract with several more on the horizon, the city decided to put everything into one three-year agreement, thus reducing the need for multiple amendments. This contract covers fiscal years 24 through 26. The software and equipment qualify for federal and state funding. Total cost is 183,619. City's match is 22,000. The first year expenditure is 72,715, which is accounted for in the department budget. So again, we recommend approval of this contract and I'll take your questions.
But that 72,000 includes the federal and state funding.
Right, that's the total cost.
Correct. Any questions? So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. And next is a purchase of a bucket truck from Altech Industries. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. Transportation Department currently contracts all the aerial maintenance of our traffic signals and school zone signs with our own call signal contractor. This purchase would allow city staff to perform, to perform minor maintenance and perform aerial preventive maintenance for the city's 170 traffic signals, 25 school zone light as well as the downtown CBD lighting. Transportation requests approval to purchase a bucket truck through the Sourcewell contract with Altech Industry, Inc. State law and the city code allows for the use of contracts
State law and the city code allows for the use of contracts to competitively bid through cooperative purchasing agencies like Sourcewell. This expense, $157,510, is funded by other capital sources in FY24. I would like to thank the purchasing department, Kathy, Megan, and Marina. For their hard work on this procurement, it was pretty difficult. They were able to cut delivery by a year while, while being under budget. I'm available for any questions.
If no questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the rule.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to the professional services contract on the Broad Street pedestrian bridge.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff through TDOT's Competitive Tap Grant Program submitted a proposal for a pedestrian bridge project near the intersection of Broad Street and Church Street. City Council approved the contract for this project with TDOT during the December 7th council meeting. Staff issued an advertisement soliciting qualifications and letters of interest to provide the professional design services necessary for the project development as outlined in TDOT's local program development office manual. Staff then shortlisted three firms to provide proposals, and after reviewing the shortlisted proposals, staff recommended ELI to perform, to perform the desired services. This contract is for preliminary design and NEPA only, including survey. Once the concept of the bridge is defined, the final design and contract administration will be negotiated and brought back to council for approval. This expense is time and material, not to exceed $267,000, $267,600, and is funded by FY21 and FY22 bond. I'm available for any questions. I believe our consultants are here as well.
If no questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the rule.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Corr. We'll move to boarding commission appointments. You have, I'm scrolling through my thing here. You have a recommendation of the golf commission. Scroll to, here we go.
Page 614?
Yeah, I'm trying to get to it here. I've got a split screen. Okay, yeah, this is Austin Loomis. Austin Loomis was recommended by Robert Sane, who is actually on the boarding, the golf commission already, and I'll give you some feedback. Austin had applied, but the thing that was, as we've talked about on our boarding commissions, as we all are a little older, our board and golf commission has several members who've been on there 25 or 30 years. So I've not met Austin, but Austin is a younger player that plays out at Old Fort quite a bit, so it was good to get some some new blood on there. He is replacing the vacant position of John Blankenship. And then you also have on the airport commission the reappointment of Valeska Starnes and our chairman, Steve Waldron.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the rule.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. You have several beer permits.
Move for approval.
We do have several beer permits. We have four regular permits for ownership. We have an ownership change for a bowling alley located at 450 Butler Drive, and new locations for indoor golf at 1720 Old Fort Parkway Suite L220, and restaurants at 1510 Gresham Park Drive and 2042 Las Casas Pike Suite A12. Applicants have met requirements for a permit and are recommended for approval pending final building and codes inspections.
So moved.
Well, we already had, we had a, we had a premature motion, but
It was premature.